Board members, I believe our presenters are all ready. Looks like they're ready to go, waiting on us. So let's dive back into our study session portion of our meeting. We have Cristela Estrada here. And will you introduce your team there? And we're excited for your presentation.
Yes, I'd be happy to. Thank you, Board Member Huntsman. First of all, I'd like to thank the board members for creating this opportunity to really look at students learning English. And of course, I have my direct supervisor, Becky Donaldson, over federal programs, who's been really supportive, as well as Leah Boris, who is, I probably mispronounced her name, didn't I, Leah? The new assistant. And also Brian Olmstead, the executive coordinator, who really supported in thinking about how to provide the best and most relevant information to help you understand the role of some of the great practices, as well as the challenges. The other thing is, we have colleagues here, so I want to acknowledge the colleagues who've been on our team from the very beginning. And that's, so Assistant Superintendent from Park City, who is Kathy Einhorn, and the Director of ALS Entitled Programs, Michelle Eldridge from Provo. We have Momi Tua, who is from Counseling and Educational Equity, and Carl Bowman, who works with Dual Immersion Programs. I'm just checking to make sure I didn't miss anybody. So these are people who we work very closely with, as well as across the agency, which I think is an important priority that the board has already stated in relationship to across-agency working. So if you look at the way we've actually organized it, I also gave you handouts. And the handouts are for your work after the session. There are course-taking patterns, as well as exemplary practice about equity and who has access to early college courses. So what I've done is, I've created the organization of the overview for educational equity, quality learning, and systems values, and I'm sure you recognize those. And so I've organized the PowerPoint in that kind of way, in relationship to promising practices. So before we start, if you look at the next slide, it's really important to understand how diverse our student population is with students learning English. So we have English learners, it's 9% of the population, and again, generally, the identification is students whose home language is different than English. And at some level, really challenges, they have challenges academically, obviously, because if we were in another country trying to learn academic Russian, I think it'd be a little bit of a challenge for us. And so, just to give you a sense of thinking about who are our students learning English. This includes a student, and if you notice the language I'm using, we're talking about each student. So it's a student who is an American Indian, comes from an environment where the home language perhaps is not English, and then a student who is also migratory, and whose language is other than English. If you look at the refugee population, we have about 3,000, and according to the Geneva Convention, and you have these definitions in your packet, so you're clear about the students that we're talking about, in relationship to the actual status of refugee students. So this is just a really clear example of the range of English learners. The next one is immigrant students, about 9,000 students, and this is a very legal definition, age 3 through 21. They were not born in the United States, and they, for three full academic years, have actually not been in a school system. So again, you have English learners, you have refugees, you have immigrants. And this gives you an example, I know it's small, but if you see 120 home languages spoken in Utah and Salt Lake. Here we have the list of languages, as well as this chart that comes off of Statistics Atlas. And I like it because it's graphic, and it shows the capacity of students whose first language, you know, is another language, so that's an asset. So if you look at the impact of this, and look at some gaps, because one of the things I think that's really important is for us to get clear about, not only who the learner is, what are the conditions in relationship to their opportunities? So if you look at the high school graduation rate, it's generally about 67%, which is the lowest graduation rate. If you look at the next, and I also want to, I think, I want to give a shout out to the data and statistics people. Randy Rafael and I work very closely together, and so do I work with Sarah Wald. So the way in which we use data to inform instruction and support for LEAs to actually build their college, their actual capacity to make informed decisions is really important. So I want you to know there are a lot of people involved in this. So here's the high school graduation rate again, and the next one is college readiness, which is the ACT, and because education elevated is, you know, less than, is 18 points. And if you look at where English learners are, they're below 10%. The next one is, and remember, these are all indicators for education elevated. So we're actually identifying gaps in relationship to English proficiency that I'll talk a little bit about later. So here's the mathematics.
We have a question, real fast.
So is this data all received?
Your mic. Board Member Rebe.
Thank you. Is this data received, gotten from the SAGE tests and those results?
Yes.
And do we use any other data points? Because I don't really feel like that SAGE always reflects the knowledge of our English language learners as well as it could.
Yeah, I really agree. And so I'm actually going to show you some really interesting data, which is focused on course-taking patterns for English learners who end up being reclassified as English proficient either in the third, fourth, or fifth grade. So when I talk to the Title I educators and all the LEAs, because Title III accountability is now in Title I, one of the things I said is, here's some evidence in relationship to quality instruction, you know, early on, which is assessed by the WETA access. You see, which tests, so we have a composite score, but it tests, so I'm going to do this in a really specific way, speaking, and reading, and listening, and writing. So one of the issues is how expressive, as well as receptive, language is used, and how individual data reports. I don't have it here, but I'll send it to you, because every single student has an individual report that we use and work with teachers and educators and districts, in schools, instructional coaches, so I've done that for the last two years. And the reason that's important is, it's actually aligned to the content literacy standards to make content comprehensible, because that's really the point. You become English proficient so that you have access to academic content that's being taught in English, which is mathematics and reading, as well as science.
Can I ask another question? Is there a tracking of people who have advanced through their proficiency quicker than other?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, I'd love to hear about that, too.
Well, you're going to love when you look in your packet later on, and you see, I've highlighted course-taking patterns in three promising programs that will probably just blow your mind. And I know some of the kids as well. And some of the people were going to be here, they didn't make it, but we have data that I think you'll be really amazed at. So, and if you want something more in-depth, where we go and visit with the kids, which is what I do, you would, it's breathtaking, really. So we'll see those indicators as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Again, the education elevated criteria, if you look at it, you know, English learners are below the 4%. And remember, this is all the educational elevated criteria, it's not just the content stage. So that's the thing you have to be kind of thoughtful about, okay? Okay, so now we're going to talk about, so I try to organize this in a very systematic, logical way, so the first thing we're going to talk about is the first priority, which is educational equity and two promising practices for increased student outcomes. This year, the Bilingual Literacy Seal was in the pilot program, and Carl and I have developed kind of a, I don't know why this keeps jumping, but a phenomenal relationship related to highlighting and then looking at individual students, and that's the course-taking patterns you have in your packet. So we had in the Bilingual Literacy Seal, this is just the pilot year, in Alpine, we had 77 students awarded with 70 awarded in Spanish, and then 12 of those were students whose heritage language was Spanish. And I have all this data, and can give it to you as well, because it's very concrete, you know, I'm not much, I'm kind of a rugged pragmatist, I don't really believe in much fluff. And so you have Davis, who had 20, from five schools, and Granite had 67. And what we did is, we looked at the kids, we saw when they were proficient, and we saw that many of the students in the Bilingual Literacy Seal had access to biology in the ninth grade, and honors classes early on in the, at middle, at the middle school. Let me go back to this. Now, the reason this is important, as you probably know this, Senate Bill 152, it was authored by Howard Stevenson and one of his colleagues. It's an advanced language pathway, which is called the Bridge Program, and you have the description in your packet, which is the most amazing. It's grade 10 and 12. So that means that students either, in three different pathways, have the opportunity to take university courses in an advanced language pathway. Now, the reason this is important is, one of the course-taking patterns that I have in there is about a resource student, who is now taking grade 10, in grade 10, he's doing advanced Spanish culture and language in Spanish. So I'm trying to give you these really concrete examples of what outcomes can be created if we're strategic in the way we create alliances across our partners, in a very thoughtful The next one is the First Descent Scholars. Kate Pergastis from East couldn't be here, and Victoria Cabal from the Business School, the Eccles Business School. The First Descent Scholars are students, for the last three years, in cohorts, who have received complete four-year scholarships. The designation is low-income students, and most of those low-income students were previously English learners. Now, the pathway that's the most successful, it's like almost 25% of those students who are successful in freshman courses, sophomore courses, and junior courses, and are on their way to graduation from the University of Utah's Eccles Business School. Low-income, and many of them are English learners, and at least 20% of them come from East High School and the East feeder pattern. And one of the reasons we've identified is that the role of the AVID strategies, which is called the Advanced Advancement via Individual Determination, and I have more information on that if you want, has made a significant difference in the way in which students not only have access to early college, but are successful at the university level. So we should be happy about that. Okay, the next one is the USB Priority Number Two, which is Learning Innovative Partnerships. So ultimately, the question is, you know, how are teachers and educators prepared to provide the best instruction for English learners? So this is a strategy, so I have five, three strategies. The first one is an annual meeting with higher ed, with the ESL Consortium, with all the Utah universities. So I've only been in this position two years, before that, I was six years in teaching and learning. So one of the ways you work with higher ed very strategically is you say you're going to change the requirements for an endorsement. And then they come very quickly. And the relationship that we end up having is really powerful, because we focus on this idea of not only pre-service, and their, the way in which their ESL endorsement is accredited nationally, based on the TESL domains, and that's what the endorsement is based on. We helped them, the first month I was in, I asked them if they could send me their syllabi from their courses. And the reason was, I wanted to see how updated their research was. And they did it. And it was very, very interesting, because that began a very honest and straightforward relationship with all the universities. And so now, I provide them all the information about what's making a difference, and how they can be more connected to the concrete experiences of the classroom environment, and what that looks like for administrators and educators. The next one is, next strategy is professional learning online. Now, digital experience is an online professional learning. For the first two years, we had 254 teachers complete one or more online courses in a collaboration between USBE, our department, UEN, and SUU. And all those syllabi were developed under my guidance with amazing educators throughout Utah, and then they were facilitated. And I just gave you an example of the data that we have. One, and this was the language acquisition course that I taught. I can identify the language demands in the text and learning tasks of my students. Strongly agree, and agree. So the point I'm making is that the courses that we designed were designed for online platform with lots of assistance from UEN, and was really related to the actual practice happening in the classroom. So my point is, it wasn't theoretical, that they could actually come out and say, now I know how to work with students. So now we've transitioned, because we've developed all those courses, and Salt Lake District has taken it on, and now we have blended learning online courses that are really spectacular. And if you ever want to see what that looks like, it's really quite interesting. So it's a different experience in relationship to just simply online coursework. And then when you meet the instructor, and you do your first session for two hours, and then you meet everybody. The person who's doing that course right now, at the moment, is Melissa Mendenhall, who does, she's the science specialist, and she does the one on family engagement. So this is an example of strategically developing resources with the best teachers, and then making sure that LEAs are using it in a systematic way, because we did all the development work. Now they have all the access to the approved syllabi. Okay, so let's look at the next, next strategy. We have the Refugee Resettlement Agency website, which is called Supporting Students New to America. I gave you the link, all you have to go to is UEN, and then put advocacy in it. The partners, we have a huge group of partners at UEN, Department of Workforce Services, the resettlement agencies. And on that website, we have videos of models of mentoring that are done by the resettlement agencies. And the people that I work with develop modules online that could be accessed, and teachers could get credit for. And it's all digital.
We have one question, or comment, Board Member Rebe.
So back to the UEN classes, I want to know what classes they are, and how to look them up, because I have that catalog up, because I'd like to share this with my teachers.
So that's, so I'll tell you what the challenge is. The challenge is, we were overwhelmed, and I'm trying to finish off the last course, which is a practicum, and I actually have 40 teachers from all over the state that I work with. And so now, because it's a blended learning, and it's specifically for Salt Lake, who's taking it over, so if in fact, a district wants to do the same thing that Salt Lake is, is doing with SUU, all they have to do is comment, and we can organize it, and it would be specifically for your district.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. See, we're the developers and the designers, and then we try to build the capacity of the LEAs to do quality work with their teachers. That's kind of really the point. If you look at the, so we talked about our relationship with the resettlement agencies, and the young people who are quite extraordinary that I am privileged to work with, they're quite amazing. Strategy Three, Building the Capacity of LEAs to Support Ongoing Teacher Development. So Board Member Rebe, this is where this comes in. Another innovative strategy that we're using, and that's why Dr. Einhorn, the Assistant Superintendent from Park City is here. And this originated out of, believe it or not, my monitoring visit to them. Now, monitoring is not about compliance. Monitoring is about really understanding instruction, and then looking at policies, procedures, and systems that mitigate any barriers to increase student outcomes, and the effective use of resources. So we're in relationship now with Superintendent Connolly and a team, and I designed this idea, because I did this when I was in Language Arts, and it's in Board Rule about competency-based design, which would actually meet the ESL required TESL standards, and then develop collaboratively electronic portfolios with evidence for competency in each of the domains. So the teachers would be gathering evidence, and the way in which the portfolio would be provided as an exhibition would be using a protocol with the people at Park City and their representation of teachers. So it's a very different way of thinking of how it is you demonstrate competency based on coursework, instead of spending thousands of dollars to take courses. And then you, and then typically, and I've been really clear with the universities because of my relationship with the ALS directors, and say, you know, oftentimes, after teachers finish the coursework, they really don't know how to apply what they're doing in the classroom. So we have to figure out how to not have that happen, right? So this is fun for me. I think it's going to be, like, really exciting, and you can come to the first portfolio exhibition for the teachers at Park City after we finish designing it. The next one is an Expanded Partnership. This one is with the Urban Institute of Teacher Education and the Office of Continuing Education. And Park City also is going to focus on this idea of micro-credentials, and the Advanced ESL Teaching Summer Seminars is organized with my colleagues at the University of Utah, I'm an adjunct there. And so in the summer, it'll be teachers who have already an ESL endorsement, but we're building their capacity for advanced teaching, right? So then that means that we'll have a whole group of people who will be mentoring other teachers in really concrete ways in their classrooms, because of being certified in advanced teaching. And this design is beginning, and the program will be probably, Mary Burbank and other people have, we pretty much have it approved, and it'll be in probably a week, in June 11th. The first part will be really focusing on the application of understanding, case studies, and then in the afternoon, the redesign of instruction that will be open educational resources based on differentiation, based on EL levels. If you look at the, let's see, did I get the third? Yeah, okay, so here's the third priority. So it's system values. And the way in which the board has designed this is the way in which effective partnership creates a systematic approach to using resources effectively. So with lots of feedback from all the ALS directors, I redesigned the LEA self-assessment tool, and aligned it to the effective use of the data gateway. And you actually have an example of the new data gateway, data, it's a mock-up of what kind of indicators we'll have. And some of the indicators have been asked directly by my friend Michelle from Provo, who said, and we'll talk, and I'll talk about this, and if you have questions for her, she'll answer. She's presented to all the ALS directors, and one of the reasons it's an exemplary practice is that it focuses on building the capacity of teachers, as well as teams in schools, to look at data, and then align resources based on student need, and then use the next set of data for program evaluation. So an example of Michelle, and looking at braided funding, Michelle Eldridge, is the school allocations are based on levels of English language proficiency, so the Level One student is weighted by three times. And so the reason that's important, and I'll just say a little bit about the research in a sentence, especially with refugee students, the first-year annual goals for a Level One student, if resources are done in a very effective way, with accountability, and funds are braided, they will move to Level Two very quickly, right? Oftentimes, people don't think about weighting resource allocations in a way that's connected to actual student results. Okay, but Provo does that. It's quite amazing, actually. And so we do this kind of analysis, and we developed a report, thanks to Michelle, that every single LEA has every single school, and every single student at every grade level, and if they've actually met their annual goal. And when teachers have, and this is the Utah International School, because we designed an individual report, the individual report has all the things students can do, right? All the things students can do as assets, instead of, right, deficit thinking. And then, they actually use that with their parents and their students, because it also shows the next year's goal in the composite, so listening, speaking, reading, and writing. So we have that available for every single teacher who's teaching any student who is, needs language proficiency services. The next one, so that's an exemplary practice, the other one is Park City. And this was because of my monitoring visit, this is kind of what I saw, and they invited me. So Kathy, Assistant Superintendent, was very good about saying, come, and let's look at our classrooms, we made some decisions about including students and not having them pulled out, or having separate coaches. separate coaches for ESL students, but more inclusive." They have a middle school mentoring program that we've, we have to do the editing, but that'll be on our website. It's an extraordinary model for EL kids. I went into the class, and they came in, they sat down, they pulled out their computers, these were seventh graders, and I walked up to this student, and we have this on tape, we just have to do the editing. I said, "Well, tell me what you're doing." And he looked at me, and he said, "Well, I'm, you know, I'm looking at Power School to see what assignments I've missed." I said, "Okay." He said, "You know, my grade point average is such and such." And then I said, "Well, tell me about your ideas about college." So, he was really clear, and, and you walk into this classroom, and if you want to come to see this mentoring program, you should come, the kids will tell you exactly what they're doing. And in sixth grade, every single student in Park City has a computer and internet service in their homes, especially if they don't have access. So, there's no digital divide in Park City. The other thing they do in high schools, which I've been trying to tell other high schools about, and if you want to meet someone who's quite extraordinary, Abelardo, Mommy and I actually took him out to lunch, their content link courses. When I went to the content link course, there was a chemistry teacher, there was English language arts teachers supporting kids in writing content academic essays, and then there was an ELD specialist scaffolding the instruction. And that's an example. I told you about digital learning. Every year, they have an increase in early college access, and their high school instruction for level one and level two is the best I've ever seen in my entire life. And Anna Williams is quite extraordinary. Here's partners at the Refugee Training Center. You'll have access to this, and you can see the video. This relationship is a brand-new one. It's a Utah company in what language, and it's focused on translation services in the cloud. So, when you provide something for them, and they have a commitment to doing pro bono work as well, which I found out pretty quickly, so that's an advantage, right? It's like a percent of their profit in relationship to how they fund what they do. So, they have a relationship with Refugee Training Center, United Way, Grand Net School District, Salt Lake Community Schools. And those are the numbers for the students, and the video shows them with their language translation services and the CEO's commitment to ensuring parent engagement. And I would really encourage you to look at the work that they're, you know, that they're actually doing. So, here's the current USBE promising practices related to the strategic plan in closing the achievement gap. So, there are five notable ones. Okay, I'm going to wrap it up. Early College Committee, the Culturally Responsive Education for Educators, the Refugee Youth Services Committee. These are, this is totally across the agencies, all the agencies, I mean, the departments in this agency. You know about the Young Authors, and now we're moving it to include Refugee Youth. And this is a brand-new one, which is a K-16 SAS initiative, really looking at the effective use of braided funding. Recommendations for the board if we're going to close the achievement gap.
Would you just explain braided funding a little more?
Yeah. Yeah, so braided funding is pretty interesting, and I've seen an example in the school plans that Provo asks. They have a needs assessment, they have demographics, and then they have a school team, and they not just use supplemental funding from federal programs, but they might use state funding, or they might use special grants. But the whole intention is the way in which they use funds, you know, it's not like complaining like we don't have enough money. What they do is they organize the way in which they put funds together to ensure student The big thing is, we have to have understandable annual reports and a way to disseminate them, and I really suggest that USBE thinks about recognition for exemplary practices. I've given you some ideas for elementary schools, for middle schools, the mentoring and advocacy programs are critical. Clayton Middle School is an extraordinary example, if you ever want to come and visit with me. High school, the increase to early college, because you've already made a commitment to that. And these are notable data, which will end up, so this is East High. Remember, Education Elevated, the, it's 67% graduation for ELs. Okay, look at East Highs. 87% for ELs. Hunter is 81%. Park City High School is 80%, and the other ones are much lower throughout the state. Okay, so questions, comments?
Yeah, Superintendent?
Just a couple of closing comments. So, first of all, I think, I think it's unfortunate that we're at the end of a long two days, and only half the board is hearing this presentation, because in my mind, when we look at Education Elevated and our strategic goals, these are the, these are the very students who need our support and services the most. And to see the exemplary practices out in the LEAs plus recommendations for you all for your strategic plan, I think are really critical if we're going to get to those marks. So, you know, in an ideal world, we would have had time on a full board agenda for this. So, I just want to give a shout-out to Dr. Estrada and her team, who have worked, I think, to show an example of this conversation we often have about monitoring, compliance, and service. And I think this is a really good example of a blend, where through monitoring and thinking about compliance and trying to get to our strategic goals, then services are being provided in the way of not going out and holding hands, but working collaboratively and bringing stakeholders together, and building capacity in our LEAs, so that they then can feel that they are empowered to do their best work on behalf of children. So, I love this example of how that all fits together, instead of having the debate about, do we spend more time on compliance or service? You can see how that coupling is so important in, in getting to better outcomes. And then, last but not least, as I've been out in the field, I've had extended gratitude for our reorganization around student advocacy services, and for, you heard about the braided funds and the blended services, and we're hearing from the field that they're starting to see that impact, because it aligns more about how they want to do their work, and we can provide better service in that manner. So, I just think what we witnessed today was a great example of the kind of conversations we've been seeing played out, and in my mind, this is one of the most important presentations the board has had. So, thank you, Dr. Estrada and team, for your great work.
You're welcome. It's my privilege, really.
Okay, Board Member Rebe?
So, as a teacher in elementary school right down the road from Hunter High, it makes me so happy to hear that it's an 80% graduation rate of ESL kids, because, you know, you cast them out into the wind, and you're like, "Oh, gosh, I hope you make it," you know? So, it's really nice to know that they are making it. And it's so nice to hear about all these pockets of excellence. And I, I'd feel bad if we didn't say this phrase sometime during this three-day, "We are on the road to awesome," and I really feel like this is an indication of how awesome we can be. So, thank you so much.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Let me go to Board Member Cannon.
Well, I, I had an experience of make, doing a presentation on ESSA, and so I pored through that document, and I looked at all the scores, and I just looked at the English language learners, and, and it was a little disheartening. And then I, I looked at our goals and where we wanted to bring them, and I thought, "How will we ever do this?" Well, now you come here today, and you are doing it. And I just feel so rejuvenated and so happy to see the expertise in behalf of these kids who just need it the most. So, this was a wonderful presentation, and I'm so thrilled, and congratulate you on your efforts.
No, thank you. It's, it's a team effort. Any other questions?
Board Member Vice Chair Britton come in, and then?
I would just have a request, if you don't mind emailing your presentation, because I know it contains some recommendations that we could bring back to our board during our strategic planning session next board meeting, so thank you.
Yeah, I'd love to. And the other thing is, if you look at what, in what language, what they're doing, and what our relationship is with that company, and their international development work that they're doing with refugee communities, you know, you'll really, you know, the energy to keep going. So, I really encourage you to look at that. Thank you.
Board Member Lisa come in.
Hi, thank you, that was fantastic. I'm going to seem like the Debbie Downer, because I have a few questions, and I, and I hope this isn't in the wrong spirit, but...
No, usually I'm the Debbie Downer, so, yeah.
So, I, I'm concerned. With the high rates of graduation, that's one thing, but when they are released into the wind, as Board Member Rebe says, are they ready to be out there? I mean, graduation is one thing, right? But are they, are they stable enough to be adults now and go out there?
Yeah, that's why I showed you the K-16 initiative in relationship to the Eccles Business School and the work that they've done. And the other thing with the K-16 initiative, and this is Brian who came to me, and we talked about my involvement more in adult education, because I actually know the data in relationship to English learners and how adults are kind of left behind as English learners and refugees. So, we're working on that in a really strategic way. And the other thing is, and if you go to our website, you'll actually see some really great examples of mentoring with a young Iraqi student who's in Salt Lake Community College, and he, and this is through the resettlement agencies, he is mentoring somebody who's at Cottonwood High who wants to be an architect. So, there are all these systems that if you upscale in a really strategic way, not necessarily by asking for more resources, but more strategically aligned, then you see the results. So, I hope that answers your question, and it's a great question. Thank you.
It does, thank you.
You have to put your light on, though.
There you go, I thought I had on. Okay, thank you. I won't be the Debbie Downer, but I'll be the happy huntsman. The, the, I just want to thank you for bringing joy into the latter part of our day.
It was part of my violin thing yesterday.
A little bit here, and, and I, I can't help it. You know, I've wondered what the passion is, we're, you know, we're out in our education communities to make all of this work, and I, I know the numbers aren't at 100%, but those are still good numbers and, and climbing. And so, I want to thank you and staff and the superintendent and everyone else that's got their fingerprints on this, because there is joy that comes from, your presentation was full of, and there's moments where you were pretty excited to report, because that passion is, is there, you're not in the trench every day, but with this kind of leadership and direction, we should, we'll, we'll continue to battle to get the good results and the outcomes. I just want to thank you for your presentation. We'll get emailed out, and for the eight of us, you know, I apologize for the other ones, but we'll, we'll get this out to them, remind them what they missed, but it's just a great way to end a couple days that, I know that little euphoria of fun that you have will help me for the two and a half hour or so, maybe it's three, drive home. But thank you for what you do, and...
You're welcome.
And we pass that on to all those that work with you. Is, is there any other comments or questions? Superintendent?
Just to acknowledge Dr. Einhorn in the, in the audience, and thank her for her help and leadership in Park City. I mean, she was one of the...
And Michelle.
Exemplars. Michelle is back there as well. Sorry.
And Carl.
Can you have them stand up?
There's Randy.
All the team is in the audience. All the team is here.
All the team, the awesome team.
I call them my posse.
Will you call their names out? Okay.
So, this is... So, I was just going to say one other thing. You know, I ended up getting yesterday the students' applications for their music scholarships for private lessons, those third-grade kids, and the applications in their words about why they want to study music, and then their parents. I'm going to type them up and send it to you, because it's, it's really wonderful. I just want to do that. Yeah, I will, I will.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. I don't see any other questions. This concludes, unless there's something I'm missing. Do we have any other unfinished business, Lorraine? Oh, okay, we need to get that. This is a thank you to the superintendent, will you make sure you get that to your superintendent, or to your, what do you call your meeting on Monday? What do you call it? No, don't you have your big staff meeting? Okay, well, we appreciate you and, and what's going on, and, and moving our strategic plan and, and all that forward. Board members, thank you for what you do. Be safe and careful and all that, and we wish Lorraine some, a good time with, with her time off. Recharge your battery well. Enjoy your family. So, thank you very much. Be safe.
Chair?
Oh, go ahead.
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Oh, yeah, we've got to adjourn it. Hey, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? We should discuss it. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, it's done.